Already done, the Pledge of Allegiance has been invoked, so we'll proceed immediately to roll call.
Mayor Foley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Alwater.
Here.
Councilmember Altieri.
Here.
The record show that those present are four zero.
Item two, are there any requests to reorder, make deletions, or additions to the agenda? If there are none, is there a motion and a second to approve?
So moved. Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have no presentations or proclamations today, other than the informal presentation. We have two members of the Finance Committee. Again, we thank you for your work that you did. Peter, you walked in a little too late to hear the personal kudos, but thank you very much for your work on that. We'll move to item number four. Do we have any comments from the public regarding the agenda items? Any items you want to comment on? All right, there being none, we will proceed immediately to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We will do it by roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater.
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri.
Aye.
The record show, motion passed unanimously with those present, four zero.
Okay, a very short mayor's report here today. Thank you, Chief Stone. We had some reports on speeding on A-1A. It's kind of an unusual situation now that people can see daylight on A-1A. They, you know, they decide that they should open up their engines. So we know you're working on that. Thank you very much for your attention to that. The second item I want to get into is just whether or not we should, council should take this up in response to some comments I've had from the public. You may have had that too, and that is District Four of FDOT is apparently interested in receiving community input on the proposal to reduce Route 60 by one lane in each direction, my understanding. And the question I've been presented is, is the town going to take a position on this on behalf of its constituents? And if there's a sense from council here, consensus that we should put this as an agenda item in August for discussion, we can discuss what, if anything, we should do. Is there any interest in that? Should we put it on for discussion for possible or probable action? Or should we just let, you know, our community members weigh in on their own individually? Yes? Okay.
I think council just let the community weigh in as I wish. I want the council to take the stand on it.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we will not have that on the agenda next month, it being the consensus of council that it's not appropriate for council action. All right, item eight, discussion with possible or probable action.
Oh, item seven.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember items, do we have any?
Mayor?
Yes.
I've got a couple.
Councilman Alwater, sorry.
I've sent some emails to the town manager. There's these ongoing cybersecurity breaches, particularly egregious one, which has been talked about in the Wall Street Journal newsletter I get, is a, there's been a breach of a file transfer protocol called MOVIT, M-O-V-E, capital I-T, one word, and apparently a lot of governments have exposure. I talked to Jim a little bit. Are we aware if we have any exposure either directly or there are parties down the line that use that file transfer protocol because apparently it's a way to tunnel into our system?
There are, to use your term, parties down the line, as it were, but, you know, in the end, we, you know, rely on the IT professionals to create the appropriate firewalls, you know, for our systems. And I know, to your point, councilmember, we had discussed, you know, a shade session to discuss some of those things that would not be really probably more appropriate, you know, for public discussion. And that, I think, would be, you know, would be an excellent, you know, an excellent venue. I will note that we have almost completed the transfer from onsite servers away from the cloud for our main, for our main systems. That's in, you know, in progress as we speak. It's been going on this week. And we feel that's a, that's a real good step, both for security and redundancy.
Okay, well, I don't know when you want to have that meeting. I guess we're talking potentially October.
And, you know, my thought was, whatever, whatever pleasure of council was, I just thought that once we got through, you know, the August and September meetings and the budget and those hearings, October would probably be an appropriate time to have our in-house IT people come in and actually elaborate in substance the details of those particular firewalls, protocols, safety concerns.
Okay, I think that's important, but the separate issue is whether we, whether we have exposure. I think there is a requirement under state law that we have to notify if we do have exposure. So maybe I'm wrong on that, but that's something that we should make sure that we're in compliance with state law. I think everybody's heard about Ruby River Beach getting nailed multiple times and having to pay multiple ransom, so, you know, and I just get a little concerned that this is a, it's viewed by outside parties as a small, rich, wealthy community that they might try to go after. So we'll bring that up.
I will follow, Councilmember Alwater, with council collectively outside of here to identify some of those down the line vendors, as it were.
Okay. Okay, I have one other item. There was on Tuesday, the Public Safety Pension Committee meeting. Just give you a very quick update on that fiscal year to date, with the markets coming back, the good news is the fund's net rate of return after expenses for the nine months is 12.3 percent, 12.36 percent, trailing one year's 8.04 percent. That's the good news on the fiscal year to date. However, against the benchmark, three percentage points underperformance, so that seems to be an ongoing issue. So it seemed to be several different factors going on. The second thing is, I had a discussion with the board about the difference between a gross return and a net return, and I found what I found were mistakes on that, and they're going to investigate it for, I think, council's time on it. But in my opinion, just not calculating things properly makes the fund look like it has a low expense ratio and then what reality it does because you're using a version of cash accounting rather than a crew accounting, which I think is a violation of GAAP. So they're going to follow up on that. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Those two items. We'll move on to item eight. Item eight A, ordinance number five six two, which is the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, which chapter four, Water Supply Facility Work Plan. My understanding is this was a state requirement that we had to prepare, put in an amendment, and I'll let Mr. Harper speak to it, but we got through with flying colors, I understand, so.
Yes, I just want to note that the proposed amendment has been sent to a variety of required state agencies in this process. There's been no challenge to it. We tried to use language that everyone's familiar with, so they, they know what we're sending up. Proof of publication is also part of the record. And on these items, I want to particularly thank our town clerk because she manages all the communications. And as you know, dealing with a lot of different state agencies on items like this can be very challenging, and we're very fortunate to, you know, to have Janice here handling that. The water supply facility plan, we don't operate one, but we're still required to do it per statute, so we prepared it, and this is, and this is second reading.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may just read the title very briefly? Thank you. Ordinance number five six two, an ordinance of the town of Indian River Shores, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan by adding a Phoenix D Water Supply Facilities Work Plan, providing for accessibility and separability, and providing for impact. Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion from council? If not, how about a motion to approve in a second?
So moved. Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater.
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri.
Aye.
Record show, motion passed unanimously with those present, four zero.
All right, thank you. Item eight B. Following on the budget workshop meeting that immediately preceded this council meeting, we are to set the maximum tentative military for fiscal year 23, 24. If there's no further discussion from council, we will be setting the tentative military at 1.3349. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, we will have a roll call vote.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater.
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri.
Aye.
The record show, motion passed, four zero, with those present.
Thank you. Item eight C, which is to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024. We had some folks walk in after the budget meeting, so did anybody have any questions or comments on the budget that will entertain at this time? If not, just want to give you an opportunity. If not, we'll move forward. If there's no discussion from council, a motion to approve will be entertained.
So moved. Second.
A roll call vote.
Mayor Foley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Alwater.
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri.
Aye.
The record show, motion passed, four zero, with those present voting.
And yet, once again, thank you to the Finance Committee and our town treasurer staff. If you see how budget items go in other, other elected bodies, it's not quite as smooth as we get it done here, and I don't think that's due to anything other than preparation and very hard work before the budgets are presented. So thank you, everyone who was involved up to this point. Item nine, staff updates. Building official reports and statistics. Fred's not here.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Harper. I think the numbers speak for themselves. I would like to note that Heather and I and our building official have been, you know, looking at the fees, and we would anticipate having something regarding the building fees to be increased at the August meeting with imposition of those changes on 10/1. We like to try to provide, you know, some notice, a little advance notice as it's going along. So that's all I have on the, on the building official report.
All right, thank you. You're wearing a lot of hats today.
Not as well as, not as well as the people that probably wear them normally, but I'm doing my best. Thank you, sir.
Are there any questions for Jim on the item of building official reports and statistics? If there are none, we'll, we'll move to, change your hat now, to the town treasurer. So we're going to move to item eight B. Again, best wishes to Heather and her family. So take it away, Mr. Town Treasurer Designee.
Thank you, thank you. That will scare everyone. I'll just, you know, defer to Heather's memorandum of July 6th. It's part of the packet. And again, you know, wish her well and thank her for all of her hard work on, on everything economic and everything else around here.
Great.
Thank you.
I just, Mr. Mayor, I just want to note on page 64, on the accounts detail, that Heather's doing an excellent job of maximizing our interest rate, our return by having the vast majority of the money, other than the cash, which is needed for daily operational needs. Most of, most of our money is earning 5.33 percent. In fact, I'm going to Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council meeting tomorrow, and I, I called them out at the last meeting on that, saying that they were having money, that most of it was at less than 1 percent. See if they make any changes tomorrow as a result of that, but she's doing a good job. So I just wanted to point that out.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else? We'll move to item nine C, the Public Safety Department report. Chief Stone?
Either the ghost followed me in, or I'm digging up the trigger. The things, things have been fairly static. You will notice a slight, you will notice a significant jump in the response line on the fire, on the fire side, and that's attributed to a, to two things that we found when we looked through the data. First and foremost is our mutual aid agreement with the, with the county, and we're running, of course, we're providing aerial services across the entire barrier island. So some of those have been extended at times, even down to the moorings.
Chief, I don't mean to interrupt you. Could you just, aerial services for, for those not, worked, worked into the terminology, could you just advise everyone what aerial services are?
The thing that sits over there. We provide aero platform, ladder truck services for everything on, on the island. And in return for that, we get an automatic aid response where we don't have to go, go through, follow requests as we did in the past. That, that is now automatic, and the closest available unit from the county automatically responds it with us to give us a hand. Manpower, being what, the amount of manpower that you need to actually perform on-scene structural firefighting operations is, requires an awful lot of people. So now we have that automatically moving. So that, that is triggered, some, some of the increase in, in two separate items, we found where we, the data did not capture the units clearing the call and going back and forth. So it was sometime after that, and they just estimated the time when it would actually went in. So we're continuing to define those, those parameters a little bit better, so to get a clearer picture of what we're actually doing out there in the field. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Alwater?
Chief, has there been any more incidents with electric batteries, whether it be on a bike or a car catching on fire? It was one in my neighborhood last year, in Ocean Colony, and I keep reading more and more about vehicles just spontaneously catching. For example, a brand new Mercedes Benz EQS, I was reading on my newsletter, just sitting in the garage, wasn't even charging, caught on, on, on fire. We've had, have we had any more incidents like that?
Not in recent history that I'm aware of. And I kind of keep track of what we're responding to as far as run scope. I know that Jake has put together a response protocol, and we're going through a reread of that and to make sure that it's for Teslas and Mercedes and battery-powered vehicles. Now, typically, once they start on fire, we just back away from them.
Yeah, really hot.
Because we can't put them out.
Yeah, drain the Atlantic Ocean trying to put them out.
Exactly.
Would it, would it be worthwhile to have your department come up with something that we could have glued in the newsletter every so often about that type of safeties or anything that might be worthwhile, that might prevent an issue?
Yes, sir. We'll be happy to put something together.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, I think I'm going to cancel my appointment at the Tesla dealership. Is there anything else? Anything else from council for Chief Stone? Thank you, Chief. Thank you for the hard work during this transition. It's noted and appreciated. Yep. Nine D, Public Works Department report.
I'm a much lesser public works director than Mr. Bryant, but I just wanted to advise he's, because of the rain, he's out in the field checking on a couple of things this morning for me specifically. The only thing I really want to note is, first, we've completed the retrofitting of the benches on Beach Comer Lane, so they now have the seating benches as they did before. So that's all done. And just a brief update on what had, we really didn't have another way to talk about it other than a sinkhole outside of the, you know, the Indian Seminole Lane area. What had happened was that when Florida City Gas was running their line, they went through a storm drain. As I understand it, speaking to the professionals, they would not have known that at the time because of the nature of the apparatus, the nature of the drain they went through. What happened was then there was a lot of rain, and there was washout underneath, and we had a hole in the, in the bike lane. That occurred pretty rapidly. So this is the responsibility of this pipeline, Florida City Gas, FDOT, but Mr. Bryant's been hounding them about the process and the timeframe. They're going to start fairly soon with a small excavation. We anticipate no impact on A-1A. The only impact will really be on the bike lane and the Indian and Seminole Lane area, but there is ingress and egress just on the other road. So I just want to give you a heads up about, about that. And all of our hurricane preparations, we obviously had meetings and discussed that, but from the public work standpoint, we're, we're prepared and, you know, in the event anything happens, and that's what's going on in public works right now.
Great. Anything, anything for the public works? No? Okay, all right. We'll move on to item nine E, Code Enforcement Report. Sergeant Mike France?
Morning, Counselor.
Morning.
Morning.
It's a very short report, which is great. Just a few real estate signs here and there. Just want to point out that we had our first special magistrate hearing this month. It went very well for the first time, which I'm surprised, but it was with just a simple permitting issue, violating and complying, and we put a lien on the house or the property. And they are trying to get things right, but it's just the process that they have to go through, and we're helping them agitate and move on from there. But other than that, it's been a good month.
Good.
Any questions?
Anything for Code Enforcement? Councilman Alwater?
I appreciate you going after signs. I don't know if you folks have noticed it, but there is a proliferation of signs everywhere in the city of Ruby River Beach and the unincorporated county. I see the county attorney is next to last day. I don't know if there's a, if there is a law or, or rule regarding the signs in unincorporated counties. It's, it really looks bad. Get down at the bottom of the, of the Barber Bridge on the, on the west side and agree with a nail salon sign sitting there. It's just, it's just, it's just really sloppy. So I appreciate you going after.
Agreed completely. You know, it's what distinguishes a community, you know, not having, having that look. So thank you. Anything else for Sergeant Mike France? No? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the town attorney report, first of all. A public congratulations to Pete, who is now a co-partner at Lock &amp; Sparrow.
Now that he's an owner of the firm, we can negotiate the reduction.
Making a note, making a note, Counselor, yes.
Congratulations, Pete. It's been a pleasure working with you and look forward to it for many years. So please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Very kind words, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to continue to represent the town of Indian River Shores. I was just speaking with Lucy, Mr. Harvey Martin, saying I thoroughly enjoy it. So thank you very much for the privilege. As far as report, there are no updates, any current litigation of any type. However, in confidence, I'd like to speak with any of you if you have any questions. There are no imminent updates, so there are things still pending, current lawsuits and such, but please do. But I did want to follow up. Sergeant Mike France also deserves some kudos, as was just stated. He's done an excellent job taking something that virtually didn't exist in code enforcement, and to Jim's point, Mr. Harper's point, that the three Es, which I can never seem to remember in order, but.
Education, encouragement, enforcement.
Yes, and I just want to compliment not only Jim, but obviously Sergeant Mike France on that. As you can see from this, there's a lot of education, a lot of outreach that's happening. Even at the hearing, for the code enforcement hearing, we tried to just make it as simple as possible. Walked, Mr. Mike France walked over physically to the building department, saying, here's your chief. So I just want to be very complimentary that it's not an enforcement mechanism that we try to use. It really is through the education, outreach, and ultimately, if it comes to it, we have to use that. So just wanted to make that point out.
Thank you. Great, thanks. Thank you. Anything for Mr. Sweeney? No? All right, we'll move to the town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of items in brief. Anticipate being able to socialize the council in advance of the August 24th meeting, a final franchise agreement with Florida City Gas. We are conducting, moving off that topic, we're conducting, as you know, a substantive review of all of our ordinances to include land development code. We're getting prepared to provide some items for information review to planning and zoning, and then you'll start seeing a few ordinances to modify the code in what we're calling Phase One, which are going to deal with a lot of concurrency and consistency with, with changes in the law, internal changes in the ordinance, just to make it better, essentially, for lack of a better way to put it. So you'll start seeing some of those things. You know, we previously discussed the anchoring limitation area. I've received an email from the county administrator, and we're going to be provided, we had already actually worked on the maps for the town here and had provided those to the county, but we're going to get them to the county again, as Mr. DeCannis, as the new county administrator, is taking up the, taking up the flag on that, as it were. So we'll see some more information on that. Thank Councilmember Alwater for appearing at the Beach and Shore Preservation Committee meeting. I know that council has a lot of information on that. We're hopeful regarding funding, as well as timing, start timing for any potential sector for the Dune project. Brief update on the solid waste RFP. Excellent meeting with county administrator, with Mr. Reingold, who's president, Machimeta, the solid waste director. We're looking at probably having an amended interlocal agreement or ILA just regarding a few of the staff or administrative items that will come up once we get into the RFP, and we are part of the county solid waste, you know, proposal and procurement. And you'll see that, and again, excuse me, some of that are just drawing out things like who is the main point of contact for, you know, complaints and things like that, who will handle some of those things, a lot of administrative stuff. Moving forward, so questions on that. On the Dune crossovers, we continue to be in the process of trying to bring people up to code and determining enforcement mechanisms. Our code enforcement and public works folks are going to be out over the next two weeks to do an update, because we've been working with folks, trying to encourage them to come up to code, remove things that they need to remove. There are still some issues out there, so we're going to have another report over the next two weeks with, you know, field observations and things like that. So we're, we're going to be moving forward on that. And for my part, that's what I have. If there are no other questions, I'm done, sir.
Any questions for town manager? Okay. All right, we'll move on to council committee reports. Starting from nothing. Nothing. Easy one. I was accompanied by, actually, I should say, I accompanied Janice and Lucy to the joint Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities and Council Local Governments event. I thought it was, and I say that because when I got up, I just said, introduced myself as the driver to these two. So I think it was a very, very positive thing for both of you to attend. You met the counterparts in, in other municipalities, and it really promotes workload sharing. And I remember Councilmember Alwater said, you know, gee, what are we going to do about all these reporting requirements pursuant to the new statutes? And so I think that there's going to be an awful lot of networking that's going to be needed to try to figure out a process that's going to work best for us to comply with business impact statements and things like that. So thank you for attending. Thank you, Jim, for allowing them to. And then the trivia fact we learned from one of the presenters was that the first cowboys, contrary to popular belief, were not in Texas. They were in Florida. So, and I have two witnesses to that. You know, if you think about it, it makes logical g-rep sense because Spanish came to Florida. They, they were cowboys, and I don't know where the hat was invented, but that was it. So other than that, we have, I have no, there were no other items to report.
Nothing to report?
I just heard quickly, I know I, I thought it was going to arm wrestle everybody to go to Florida League of Cities, but seriously, I did write a email to the president of Florida League of Cities. Unfortunately, I haven't got a, a response or wrote that last month about this business impact statement, that it should be an item for the conference up in Orlando. And I was going to say, if there's any issue, I want to bring up, but I guess actually I can't ask you that because that'd be a sunshine mobile.
I think I'm following you. No, it's, it is going to, there is a, for the public that's interested, we're, another unfunded mandate has been put upon the town and other municipalities, that any time there's an ordinance change or any requirement, we have to, you know, come up with a yet-to-be-determined financial impact statement, which is, you think of a simple thing about, you know, changing an ordinance for, preventing signs in a certain section of the town, well, we'll have to produce a financial impact statement for that. It's going to be, it's going to be burdensome. We'll see how it goes. There was some thought that there may be a software provider that's going to build cottage industry up. I've seen nothing yet. nothing yet.
Okay.
Nor has there been any information coming from any of the various councils, but we'll continue to raise it just to see what it is, so we don't have to, we don't have to spend resources on it, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's just particularly disappointing that the people who voted for approval, voted yes, many of them are former local government officials, I'm asking myself, what are they thinking? First, I think I know what the answer is, is that the way the state legislature works is the speaker and the president make the rules, and everybody just goes, regardless of how dumb a piece of legislation it is.
Well, all right, we'll, we'll keep everybody informed on that as we move forward, so none of us up here like wasting money on things that don't make sense, so in our, in our situation, it doesn't seem to make sense. All right, let's move to item 13, call to the audience, anything on anybody's mind they want us to know about or think about? No? All right, if there's no other, no other items, then we can adjourn the meeting, so we'll see you next month, we'll see you in August. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, sir.